I think we should go ahead and start. Good morning, everyone.
We have this proclamation that I think was correct.
Yes, yes. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the April fifteenth meeting of the Portland City Council. Would you please call the roll?
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman.
Here.
Novick.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Hales.
Here. Welcome, everyone. We have some informal business up front and then some communications items and then the regular agenda. So let me first turn to Commissioner Novick, who has a proclamation to read.
Mayor, I want to offer my thanks to Deanna Wesson Mitchell of your staff, who came up with the idea for this proclamation, which is highly embarrassing because I should have come up with it myself.
No harm, no foul.
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time and require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters depends on the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who call 911. And professional public safety telecommunications are a vital link between citizens and victims and are often the first contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications monitor the activities of police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel by radio and provide them with information while seeking to ensure their safety. And whereas according to the Association of Public Safety Officials International, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week was initially conceived in 1981 by Patricia Anderson of the Contra Costa County Sheriff's Office in California, and Congress formally designated the week in 1991. And whereas public safety telecommunications of the City of Portland's Bureau of Emergency Communications have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and lifesaving treatment of patients experiencing medical emergencies. And whereas telecommunications in the Bureau of Emergency Communications exhibit compassion, understanding, and professionalism while performing a critically important job as Multnomah County's first responders. Now, therefore, I, Charlie Hales, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim April 12th, 18th, 2015, and I note that the fact that this week includes the day of the midnight riot of Paul Revere is very appropriate as public safety telecommunications play a similar role to be National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Portland and encourage all residents to observe this week.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's hear it for our 911 operator, who said he did a great job. I've had chants a couple of times. I think everybody on the council has to actually sit on the floor and watch them work. And I think when we call, we have no idea the highly trained complexity of their work. So it's pretty impressive. It's nice we could recognize them. Thank you. So we have some communications items up front, some folks who've signed up to speak to the council, and we'll take them in order, starting with number 371.
Request of Amanda Shore and Jade Bradford to address council regarding civic scholars at City Club of Portland.
Good morning. Welcome.
Thank you. Dear Mayor Hales and Commissioners Novak, Fish, Fritz, and Saltzman, I am pleased to also have Park Rose Superintendent Karen Gray here in the audience. On behalf of the City Club of Portland, I am pleased to present to you today about Civic Scholars, City Club's youth civic engagement program. Civic Scholars seeks to demystify leadership, advocacy, and government for youth from underserved schools. To do this, we invite students, many for the first time, to a formal business environment. We also include students in discussions with community leaders and work with them to build advocacy skills. After a Q and A with Portland Police Chief Larry O'Day, a young woman from East Portland told me, "I had been prepared to ask him all these tough questions, but then I met him and he seemed like a nice guy and I froze." The ability to speak one's mind in front of intimidating leaders takes practice. By including students in multiple events per year, this program provides the practice necessary to build confidence and have one's voice heard. This advocacy practice also takes the form of questions at the microphone at Friday Forum, where I've seen future leaders bravely ask questions about gun control, legislation protecting undocumented immigrants, affordable housing, and the lack of affordable arts opportunities in Portland. These questions again build confidence. If a student can look the governor in the eye and ask a question in front of 300 people in the whole state on OPB radio, I think they'll be fine lobbying their school board for money for new planners or impressing their next employer in a job interview. The Civic Scholars Program works with youth to build these skills, but the program has just as profound an impact on the adults surrounding them. Scores of people have approached me at these events and sent me emails to tell me how inspired they were by a student's question. I set out to inspire youth, yet most of the emails I get are from inspired adults. I believe this is because, for all the despair that can go around about kids today and the future, not many people are actually asking young people what they care about or giving them a chance to voice their passions, concerns, and ideas. This program has shown that our future is in innovative, smart, and compassionate hands. On that note, I now introduce Jade Bradford, a senior at Park Rose High School and a civic scholar. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you, Amanda. Good morning, Mayor Hales and fellow commissioners Novick, Fish, Fritz, and Saltzman. My name is Jade Bradford and I'm 17 years old and I'm currently a senior at Park Rose High School. I'd like to express my gratitude to you for taking the time to listen to my colleague and I on behalf of the organization that we represent. This year, the City Club of Portland introduced their Civic Scholars Program, and little did I know that I would end up being a participant in the organization's pilot session. The program was introduced to me through our school's Student Senate Association. I didn't think much of the program at first and simply saw it as something I could put on a resume. But then I attended my first Friday Forum and experienced a life-changing event. The Civic Scholars Program has opened up so many doors for me, and just as a young 17-year-old, I've done and experienced many things that many established adults haven't been able to. I was just one of very few lucky students who were able to experience this wonderful program, and I feel that all students across the nation should experience similar organizations so that they may receive a small taste of what the world has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you both for coming. Well, we'd love, if you're willing, council members, we'd love to take a picture with five current and two future occupants of these five chairs, so.
I'd love that.
I got to be closely cross-examined by these civic scholars at that Friday Forum. And actually, one of the great things, a number of great things that former Mayor Adams did with his revitalization of the city club was introduce this relationship with the Civic Scholars Program. So it's just one more sign of how that old institution has become new and has really reached out to and started to include student leaders. So very happy about that and very happy about what you're doing, and we look forward to having you back in civic life in a number of roles over the next few years. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to 372.
Request of Michael Krupp to address council regarding military and the commissioner of police.
Okay, let's move on to 373.
Request of Charles Johnson to address council regarding taxes and justice.
Good morning and welcome.
How do y'all? I am Charles Johnson. I'm here to actually talk about how our taxpayer money is being kind of squandered on this lie of Portland being a champion for climate change. It seems like every year we actually get an award for being champions of climate change because of, you know, the great work of people like Tom McCall back in, you know, the 70s and 60s. But really, you know, we have kind of seen that Portland's become a fossil fuel center. It's a corridor. The fossil fuel industry is booming here. They get wonderful tax breaks. They get wonderful incentives to come into our community. And it just doesn't kind of sit well with me with the green reputation that Portland has. So coming up, we actually have the propane vote that I'm sure y'all are very aware of. I hear it's a win for the climate. It's a win for the environment. But really, it's going to be sending propane from tar sands and fracking operations in Canada that are poisoning indigenous communities' water right through our city, creating a giant blast zone in St. John's. I really encourage you, members of city council, to actually take a stand on this vote. This is something that's really important to people in my generation because we're going to have to deal with the effects of catastrophic climate change. And the propane terminal with its, when it's burned, will contribute to 0.7% of all global emissions of carbon dioxide. It seems like a small amount, but Portland really is the leader on these kind of things. But I have a little bit of, you know, lack of faith, unfortunately. Steve Novick, I know that you have accepted several thousand dollars in campaign contributions from Greenbrier Industries, one of the largest constructors of coal barges, oil trains, that sort of thing. And you say that coal is social justice for China. I hope you actually fall back on your environmentalist credentials on this vote. Saltzman, I know you used to work for CH Doom Hill. You may go back to work there again after you're done. But CH Doom Hill is in the business of constructing fossil fuel terminals. And I know the city council has voted to give CH Doom Hill mini-contracts to build these things. And then Charlie Hales, I know you worked for HDR Industries, which is in the same boat as CH Doom Hill in constructing fossil fuel terminals, both upstream and downstream. But I think this is an issue of environmental justice and the violation of public trust. So I'm here to plead with y'all to actually think about my generation and the effects that it will have on not only me, but my roommate's daughter, who's still even younger than I am. Also injustice to communities of color in St. John's and North Portland. They have higher rates of cancer and lack of access to food because of the increasing drought in California. And they're also just dealing with a lot more injustices promoted by the city in general, like less than $15 an hour minimum wage, rapid gentrification promoted by the city developers, and police violence on a daily basis. So as we kind of come up to this propane vote, like, let's really think about our climate action plan and take an action on it instead of just kind of talk about it. Thank you.
Sir, I appreciate your interest in the issue. Actually, we're having a hearing this afternoon on commercial energy benchmarking in order to actually reduce carbon emissions from commercial buildings. So I'm not sure if you're available, but that's at 3:30 today. And then, secondly, you might want to check, but I'm pretty sure that neither the city or the state has ever given tax breaks to fossil fuel companies.
It happens on a lot of different levels.
Well, it may happen in other places, but I don't think it's happened here because we have a very limited number of tax incentives that we can offer. And I don't believe they've been offered to anything associated with fossil fuel, but it would be worth checking.
They pollute our climate, which in turn they should be paying taxes on.
Oh, sure. You bet. But again, in terms of tax breaks, I think it's pretty important to know when the city's actually giving people a break on taxes. We do it for affordable housing, but I'm pretty sure we haven't done it for fossil fuel.
And then don't mandate that the affordable housing gets built like the.
Well, we're working on that. But Commissioner Novick.
And I have a question, which is that right now, people in Portland use propane in like their backyard grills. And do you think that if we, and that obviously has to come from somewhere. It's transported here somehow. Do you think that if we choose to deny the propane terminal that's proposed, to be consistent, we should also prohibit the use of propane by Portlanders?
I definitely think we should be cutting back on that. I don't think sending propane to China so that we're sending our jobs over to China because this propane is just going to fuel jobs in China where they have lax labor laws. Unions here in the USA aren't going to be getting those jobs. They're all going to be sent to a place where workers are dying on a daily basis because of lax labor laws and they're not unionized. So with your, like, kind of labor credentials, I think you would probably see that it's an important union issue to make sure that those jobs are staying here and not going to China.
I just note that actually, the union organizations that have spoken out about this issue because the building trades would like to get the job of building the terminal have actually spoken out in favor of it. So.
There were also several unions that spoke out against it at the hearing last week, so.
Good. Thanks. Appreciate you coming. Okay, 373, sorry, 374.
Request of Lightning Watchdog X to address council regarding Joint Terrorism Task Force Memorandum of Understanding Amendments.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Watchdog X. I'll have a few issues to go over. Now pertaining to the Joint Terrorism Task Force, I didn't feel we had adequate time to make any amendments to the MOU. A couple of the current concerns I had was who was going to pay the overtime. We didn't have enough transparency. In the event of excessive use of force being used, can we maintain our compliance with the current settlement agreement by joining Joint Terrorist Task Force? That's my main concern. I think the timing of this should have been after the settlement agreement expired and then possibly consider going into the JTTF. So remaining in compliance, I have a concern about that. Now pertaining to affordable housing, one of the concerns I have is that the 30% MFI or below. We're not meeting the inventory out in the marketplace. We're meeting the inventory from private developers for a higher MFI. And I think we need to plan aggressively on the affordable housing issue to meet this demand, like Pearl District has done in their location, like North McAdam has done in their location. As I would propose that we set aside the purchase of the U.S. Post Office at 715 Northwest Hoyt, approximately 13 acres, and designated that toward 30% medium MFI and develop that whole parcel out for that purpose. We have a lot of area there to work from. We have a lot of land and we can build a tremendous amount of affordable units at 30% MFI. I'm asking that foundations will step up to the table and offer assistance on this project. And again, we need to focus on a large-scale effort at the 30% MFI. And I think we can do that if we begin planning now and understand the demand is there of 23,000-plus units. We're not meeting that demand. The number is growing higher. We can do that with the planned development with the U.S. Post Office, if it's purchased through PDC of 13 acres and designated for that purpose, that purpose only, and to have no height restrictions on how high they want to build the buildings there and offer assistance from foundations, corporations, to get the job done, get the people off the sidewalks into housing. Now, as far as on Uber coming to town, you ask a question all the time, "Well, why don't we, why didn't we regulate the cabs?" Or "Why did we regulate the cabs in the past and why aren't we doing it now in the future?" Well, you need to turn that question around back to you and the past administration and ask that administration why they did that. Exclusivity, scarcity offers value in the marketplace. That's why they did it. When Uber comes to this town, it will saturate the market. The values of these other companies will go down. And remember, that was past administration that put that into place. So that's who you need to be asking on why that was put into place and how that's going to affect the current cab companies in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Lightning. Thank you very much. Okay, 375.
Request of Michael Blass to address council regarding proposal to help everyone.
Blass, are you here? Okay, then let's move on to item 376, please.
Do you want to do the consent agenda first?
I'm sorry. Want to do the consent before the proclamation? No, we can do the proclamation.
Well, it's a time certain.
It's time, okay. We can do consent. We've got some things to pull off. So let's see. We're going to pull item number 380 and 382 from consent to regular. Anything else that anyone wants to?
Mayor, I'd like to pull 384 onto regular agenda.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so let's take a vote on the balance of the consent calendar, please.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. Okay. Now, 376.
376. Proclaim April 2015 to be Fair Housing Month in Portland.
Commissioner Saltzman.
Thank you, Mayor. And before we begin our presentation this morning, and I'll read the proclamation, but I'd like to call up Diane Hess of the Fair Housing Council of Oregon, Housing Director Tracy Manning. Oh, there she is. Okay. And Jason Trombley, the Chair of the Fair Housing Advisory Commission. If you could all come to the table and I'll read the proclamation. Declaring April Fair Housing Month. Whereas our community is committed to equal opportunity and housing choice for all. And whereas the theme of Portland's Fair Housing Month is overcoming and mitigating disparate impacts, along with this year's National Fair Housing Month theme, fair housing is your right, use it. And whereas the City of Portland and its partners are working together to combat discrimination, disparate impacts, and other impediments to housing choice. And whereas the city council adopted Portland's first-ever fair housing action plan in September 2011 and established a fair housing advocacy committee to oversee its implementation. And whereas the plan calls for a combination of enhanced outreach and education, increased testing and enforcement, an expanded supply of quality, affordable housing options, mitigation of displacement, and increased inter-bureau coordination. And whereas the Portland Housing Bureau is working with landlords and tenants to increase choice for low-income renters citywide, and whereas under federal fair housing laws, Oregon civil rights statutes, and Portland City Code, it is unlawful to discriminate on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, national origin, marital status, sexual orientation, source of income, military status, gender identity, age over 18, type of occupation, or history as a victim of domestic violence. And whereas Housing and Urban Development Memo of 2001 states, "Actions to affirmatively further fair housing should further practices of the Fair Housing Act by actively promoting wider housing opportunity for all persons while maintaining a nondiscriminatory environment in all aspects of public and private housing markets." And whereas Executive Order 12892, as amended, requires federal agencies to affirmably further fair housing in their programs and activities. And whereas 2015 marks the 47th anniversary of the signing of Title VIII of the Federal Civil Rights Act, also known as the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968, and the 27th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act Amendments of 1988. Now, therefore, I, Charlie Hales, Mayor of the City of Portland, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim April 2015 to be Fair Housing Month in Portland and encourage all residents to observe this month by joining the effort to promote fair housing for all. Because fair housing is your right, use it. And now I'd like to ask our distinguished panel to provide some testimony. Should we start with Tracy or you want to start with Diane?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Diane Hess, Education Director from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. And April 11th, 1968, 47 years ago, one week after the assassination of Dr. King, President Johnson signed the Federal Fair Housing Act, which at that point made it illegal to discriminate based on race, color, national origin, and religion. The history of, oh, and it actually covered both individual acts of discrimination and systemic segregation. So that was in the act right from the beginning. And our history in Portland and Oregon kind of mirrored the nationwide history of discrimination, segregation, and displacement, going back to the Oregon Trail. And I think most kids that learn about the Oregon Trail and the Oregon Land Donation Act may not learn that it was for whites only. So starting with that and our original constitution in Oregon, where it said that African-Americans and people of Chinese descent could not purchase any real estate and it was illegal for African-Americans to actually live in the state under that exclusion clause, which is one of the reasons there was not a lot of African-American migration to the state until World War II. Here in Portland, in 1919, the Portland Board of Realtors Code of Ethics basically set a Realtor who sold a home to an African-American or an Asian in a white neighborhood, which was considered four blocks of housing where whites lived, would be kicked out of the Board of Realtors. And at that time, an area of north-northeast Portland designated, identified as the Albina Neighborhood was the area for African-Americans. There was a history of redlining, lack of loans, lack of sidewalk and other infrastructure repairs. At that time, restrictive covenants became common. So many individual homes and neighborhoods in Portland were restricted to whites only. And even today, you can purchase a home and be at the title company signing the paperwork and there in the deed are this language, which is no longer legally enforceable. The house can only be sold to African-Americans, I mean to whites, excuse me, to whites. But African-Americans and Asians can live there as domestic servants. So the trend continued in the 20s when the Klan was very big in Oregon and the legislature passed a bill preventing Oregonians of Japanese descent from purchasing real estate. Long history of displacement, starting with Native Americans in the Oregon Trail. I don't know how many folks know that there was a community of Chinese vegetable farmers near the Multnomah Athletic Club and Providence Park that were displaced by the city in the early 1900s. 3,700 Japanese, two-thirds of them U.S. citizens after Pearl Harbor. The Roma Community that lived in the Pearl displaced by the mayor, Mayor Riley in 1944. And the Jewish Community of South Portland displaced by urban renewal later in the century. African-Americans in Portland were displaced by a series of urban renewal projects in the 1950s, 60s, and 70s. Memorial Coliseum, Moving I-5, and the planned expansion of Emmanuel Hospital. And during that time, over 1,000 homes and business, 1,000 home, people lost their homes and many businesses were eliminated. So first, African-Americans were restricted to north-northeast Portland. And then after building community, they faced steady displacement, first from these urban renewal projects, and now for about a quarter of a century, gentrification that completely has altered that community and forced many whose families have lived there in the area for generations to move into other areas, primarily east Portland and east county. So looking back to 1968, fair housing rights have continued to evolve since President Johnson signed the act. Women's movement in the 1970s made it illegal to discriminate based on sex. 1988 Fair Housing Amendments Act, the Commissioner Saltzman mentioned, illegal to discriminate based on disability, families with children. Here in Oregon, before 1988, between 60 and 70% of the rentals were off limits to families with children. And that's when we first be able, had strong enforcement mechanisms. And as the proclamation mentions, over time, Oregon and the City of Portland have expanded the protections. So there's been tremendous progress over the last 47 years, but discrimination and segregation persist. HUD estimates more than 3 million instances a year. And I can say just from the calls that come into our hotline, we had 3,000 calls last year, some of the things we see a lot of. We don't see much anymore of, you know, no Jews allowed or no children allowed, those kinds of things. But we do see persistent, more subtle discrimination, where the landlord might not say they want a Latino family, where they'll say the unit has already been rented. We've seen an increase in harassment of individuals based on protected class and also continuing problems with not only landlords, HOAs, and so on that are refusing to provide reasonable accommodations for people with disabilities. Racial segregation persists as well nationally and locally. Locally, for example, 75% of our African-Americans are living in just 16% of the census tracts. So whether intentional or not, housing. So whether intentional or not, housing policies may have a discriminatory impact or a disparate impact on protected classes. We see this on an ongoing basis in individual situations. For example, in Newport, there was a landlord who refused to rent to anyone who worked in a fish cannery. Unlike Portland, occupation is not protected in Newport, but we found more than 90% of the folks working in fish canneries there were Latino. So whether it was intentional or not, that policy had a disparate impact. Or a large apartment complex that says no tricycles anywhere in this community, they're not directly saying no families with children. So intentional or not, that falls under housing discrimination, and it's not just the individual acts, but systemic acts as well. We deal around the state with communities that don't want low-income housing, don't want group homes for people with disabilities that clearly have a disparate impact. Here in Portland, we still have that legacy of urban renewal and gentrification that has obviously had a disparate impact on the African-American community. And as the proclamation says, jurisdictions have the responsibility to affirmatively further fair housing, and that means using a fair housing lens in planning, code enforcement, allocation and resources, and really all aspects of housing and community development. And Tracy Manning and Jason Trombley are going to address Portland's fair housing efforts.
Thank you, Diane. Good morning, happy Fair Housing Month. So now the good news. We, as a community, have for years partnered with our neighboring jurisdictions, Multnomah County, City of Gresham, some of our great community organizations, the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, the State Bureau of Labor-
Labor Industries.
Thank you. To really try to impact people's ability to live where they choose to live. And I think some of the things that Diane cited, there's a real growing awareness that it's not okay to, that people can't access the communities they want to live in. And if you look at the City of Portland and your housing policy as it's evolved over time, we've spent more and more time really focusing on the opportunities that people have based on where they live. So while it is true that our history of racial segregation is both present, it's also changing, and that whether that segregation is present because of discrimination or unintended consequences, our intention has the capacity to impact those problems. And so Diane shared the history of north and northeast Portland. It's a great example of where recent council action has directed us to impact the access of people to fair housing. So while in those neighborhoods, the percentage of African-Americans has been reduced by half since 1990, and those community members do still feel at risk of displacement because in part of council action, and also because of the City of Portland's Fair Housing Action Plan, which outlines exactly these kinds of actions that we can take to address issues of segregation and displacement, we can have an impact. One example is the funds that you've provided to offer foreclosure assistance, home repair assistance, first-time homebuyer assistance. There's a waitlist of 100 people, we're going to be able to start chipping away at that. We know these programs work. Based on our current program performance, at least 80% of those assisted will continue to live in their homes 12 months after receiving services. So I think we, it's important to know and acknowledge our history of how we got where we got. I also want to put in context that our work partnering with Fair Housing Council of Oregon and with our really great community organizations, we have the ability to have an impact, it's not just the list of offals. So with that, I'd like to give the floor to Jason Trombley. Jason is the Chair of the Fair Housing Advocacy Committee. That's a committee that we share with Multnomah County and the City of Gresham. It includes all kinds of community members who sit at the table together to create a plan to actually change the way our community looks, and I'm deeply grateful for their volunteer time and their intelligence.
Thank you very much, Director Manning, Mayor Hales, members of the council. So first, with regard to FFAC, I wanted to talk about the fair housing assessment. So we're very proud of the work that the City of Portland has undertaken to address fair housing choice. Every year, we educate a significant number of landlords. For example, over 776 landlords received fair housing education during the annual Bureau of Development Services landlords' training. From the training, we can see the awareness of the rights of people with disabilities to have pets at their apartments, and an awareness that all landlords in Oregon must take an application regardless of the source of income. The Portland Action Plan also sought to increase fair housing awareness in renters. The national theme is fair housing is your right, use it. In the annual community needs hearing, we learned from our recent immigrant communities that many do not know their fair housing rights, and until we share the knowledge, they will not know that landlords cannot refuse basic habitality, repairs like repairing leaks and broken appliances. There is evidence of the growing awareness and the increase in visits to the Fair Housing Council's website, 13,556 website visits in fiscal year 2014. Also, market conditions are changing in Multnomah County, and new populations are arriving. To address the changes, we are creating our next five-year plan for prioritizing spending of federal and local resources in ways that expand housing choice. To prepare the consolidated plan, housing and urban development requires a fair housing assessment. Demographics, segregation, disproportionate housing needs, disparities in access to community assets, and exposure to adverse community factors, disability and access, and fair housing complaint outcomes, fair housing knowledge, and practices that further or hinder fair housing choice in Portland, Gresham, and Multnomah County. Next is disparate impact. The Fair Housing Advocacy Committee is focused on disparate impact because we are hearing from the community about the impact of displacement. There is a lot at stake in the national conversation about fair housing. In a recent Supreme Court case of the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs versus the inclusive communities, a decision in favor of the state of Texas could potentially weaken the Fair Housing Act by not recognizing disparate impacts as a condition of discrimination, and thus reopens the door to housing policies and practices that excludes people on the basis of their race, color, national origin, gender, religion, disability, or family status. A decision in favor of inclusive communities could complicate how and where public dollars are spent if they are made in places of poverty. Regardless of which direction the decision goes, it should not weaken our city's resolve to actively prevent, overcome, and mitigate disparate impacts in Portland. We need to do both, invest in low-income communities and invest in high-opportunity areas in ways that increase access for low-income families and communities of color and other protected classes. And third, which I think is the most exciting part of the morning, which is our fair housing poster contest. Today, we are honoring two students from the statewide Fair Housing Council of Oregon Fair Housing Poster Contest. Both won third place in their respective age groups. The students are Jasmine Bonahan from Gresham Valley Elementary and Morgana Cartwright from Southwest Charter School. She could not be here because she's attending outdoor school. So Morgana is from Southwest Charter School, won third place in the four-to-five category. Again, she couldn't be here because of outdoor school, but we still wanted to acknowledge the efforts of Morgana and her school. The Fair Housing Council of Oregon has been working with the Southwest Charter School for several years now. They did an amazing comic book on the housing discrimination and the local history of Portland. You can take a look at the copy on display at the table today. And lastly, is Jasmine from Gresham, from Gresham from Powell Valley Elementary School, the third-place winner in the first-to-third grade category. Jasmine has family here and in the Philippines. She excels in gymnastics at Northwest Gymnastics Training Center. She's won multiple trophies and medals at every meet this season, and recently was asked to join their Junior Olympics team, which she began on April 2. And so, very quickly, I'd like to invite Jasmine to come up and share a few words about her poster.
Hey, good morning.
Which of the two is hers?
Top one? Great. Welcome, don't be nervous, we're really happy to hear you talk about your poster. How'd you get the idea? Did you change your ideas, you worked on it? Tell us more about it.
Well, I just thought about it, and I was just thinking, and I was doing the poster for fun, I didn't know if I was going to win, I was just thinking of doing it for fun. And I just thought of it, and I just started drawing houses, and then it all just started coming to me.
Where do you go to school, honey?
Powell Valley Elementary School.
Excellent. I like how you included a lot of trees in your poster. We're a city that loves trees and loves our parks, so a bunch of us up here noticed that, I think, in particular.
Do you have anyone-
We'd love to take a picture with you and your poster, too.
Yeah, we want to do that, too.
Do you have anybody with you today from your family or friends?
I have my mom and dad and my sister.
Let's give them a round of applause.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, why don't we have a picture?
Diane, can I just make one comment? Today is actually the day that the arts tax is due.
That's right. Yeah, that's right.
The arts tax is, has allowed us to have 70 arts teachers in schools throughout Portland serving 30,000 children. And as we look at your beautiful poster, we're reminded of how important it is to have art as part of the normal curriculum. And you obviously have a lot of talent, and by putting all the trees in there, I know you warmed Commissioner Fritz's heart, so.
She's Parks Commissioner.
Well, why don't we get the posters up there and picture, and- Family members are welcome to join us?
As I said, I'd like to ask you guys to sign her poster right here.
Come on in, Diane. We're getting a head start on first Thursday.
Actually, can we leave Kim in the picture? So Kim is the Bureau's Fair Housing Guru. Kim McCarty.
Thank you.
Thank you for the hard drive.
Thank you all.
For you guys, you want us to? Pass them out, okay.
Diane has already taken all the posters?
We don't have to argue with him about that.
Yeah, well-
I'll make sure everybody gets one.
Yeah, do we have time for a couple of questions?
We sure do.
Let me kick it off by asking Diane, the last two weeks, we all saw full-page ads in local newspapers declaring the commitment of the private landlord community to observing fair housing laws. Two questions, how did that come about? And I don't remember ever seeing full-page ads in newspapers signed by multifamily Northwest and other industry leaders making explicit commitments during this week. So could you give us the backstory?
Sure. I would say, well, there are a number of different organizations that represent landlords and property management companies. Multifamily Northwest, we've had a growing partnership with, we've always done trainings, but they now have a fair housing committee, and they actually just had a fair housing fair for property managers that hundreds of people came to. So that is an emphasis, both education and outreach, and a great thing is they're doing more and more of this, not just in the Portland metro area, but other areas of the state. So this is the first year they did the full-page ad, and I think a lot of it is that they have this activist committee. We're actually, next Friday, doing one of our fair housing bus tours for their members, and I know we have a waiting list, so there's obviously an increased level of consciousness. I will say, one of the challenges is that there are so many landlords that are not affiliated with an organization like that, and that would be great, actually, I think it would be great, I'm just going to throw this out there, if right at the point, people purchased rental property, either licensing or at least a requirement to take a test or something like that, which they do have in other states and jurisdictions and other parts of the country. I mean, one of the things we try to do is give information on an informal basis to Realtors, to title companies, to give it to these folks, so they don't find out they did something wrong, at the point that the Bureau of Labor and Industries has a complaint against them. But it's a great thing how multifamily, how the industry, and other industry groups too, are really affirmatively making efforts to educate their folks to get a real understanding of fair housing, and we hope that we can get more of the individual mom-and-pop landlords hooked into that.
Other questions?
I want to thank our panelists, and today, our actions, you know, restate our commitment to housing choice and affirm that we hold ourselves to a higher standard, so thank you all for being here today.
Commissioner, I'd like to bring up a fairness issue.
Uh-oh.
I think that it is grossly unfair, and I made this clear to her, that Tracy Manning is planning to leave. And I want to let her know that I've asked the city attorney if we have authority to draft her and compel her to remain in her current position.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciated your email.
Thank you very much. She's going out with a bang, she'll be here several times more this morning. We won't let her off that easy. Thank you.
Thank you all very much, thanks, Commissioner Saltzman.
Thank you.
So, we're going to move in a moment to the rest of our agenda. We have a relatively brief one this morning, and want to just ask that folks testify on the items that are before us specifically. If you are a lobbyist, we need you to disclose that information. If you're here representing an organization, we ask you to do likewise. Please testify to the matter at hand. We typically limit testimony to three minutes per person, and I think given the small group of people here this morning, we won't have any trouble staying on schedule. We have a relatively new member, Danae Vanner, from the city attorney's team here, serving us this morning, so you know him. So let's begin with the regular item, and we'll return to the, we'll return to the past consent items after that. So the regular item is 385.
Authorize a contract with the lowest responsive bidder for construction of the Hollywood Grant Park Sewer Rehabilitation Project, number E10384, for $9 million.
And this is the second reading, and we'll call vote.
Fish?
Mayor and colleagues, last week, we had presentations from Bureau of Environmental Services and Water Bureau. They were two of the, I thought, better news presentations that the bureaus have had in a while. One was this BES item about a major sewer rehabilitation project, and the extensive community outreach they've done in laying the groundwork. And the second was the Dam Two project up in the watershed that came in on time and under budget. We had a fair quorum of the council when these things came before us, and I think the chambers were empty, and Steve made some comment about, about good news and being no news. But I, while, while we can't control that, I do think it's, it's important at these moments just to acknowledge that the good work that these bureaus do is a result of a lot of highly dedicated people doing their job, usually without a claim, and I'm very proud of what they do, proud to be their commissioner in charge. And this is a project that is very promising. There's been a lot of work done, and I know I will be hearing from people in that community if it doesn't go as scheduled, because after all, I live in Hollywood. Today, I'm pleased to vote aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye. Okay, so let's return to our items from the consent calendar that we pulled to regular calendar, starting with item 380.
Authorize police officers at the rank of captain or above who have previously been members of the Portland Police Association or Portland Police Commanding Officers Association bargaining units to contribute upon retirement- bargaining units to contribute upon retirement, unused sick leave into a voluntary employee beneficiary association trust.
Mr. Amberg, the city attorney's office is here to walk us through this, and there's a proposed substitute.
Aye, yes, good morning, Mayor and Council. We have introduced a substitute ordinance because of a little bit of a change in the direction, not on the substance of what is going to happen with regard to this, the basic issue, the contribution of sick leave into this VIBA trust. In consultation with the attorney for the Portland Police Commanding Officers Association, which signed the settlement agreement we entered into last fall, and the attorney for the PPA VIBA trust, which is the trust into which the, these contributions will be made, long story short is originally, we thought there was going to have to be a, this entity created a captain's beneficiary association. In consultation with the VIBA trust attorney, it was determined that's not necessary. When the ordinance was originally drafted, we drafted it with the idea that there would be this captain's beneficiary association. We've eliminated that, and there was a substantial enough change in the ordinance that we felt it was appropriate to ask this to be introduced as a substitute ordinance rather than an amendment to the ordinance.
The practical effect of this is that, that after members of the police bureau, in effect, graduated out, graduate out of represented status by being promoted from lieutenant to captain, they can pay into this VIBA trust, and it will be managed by their former union, the Portland Police Association, right?
Correct, yeah. If I could clarify a couple of issues, the, this happens only upon their retirement from the city. There's a formula where if they have accrued unused sick leave, a portion of that can be placed into this VIBA trust upon their retirement from the city. It's only for officers who, as the mayor has stated, have graduated, so to speak, or risen up through the ranks from a represented position in either the PPA or the PPCOA. And the PPA VIBA trust is the, again, is the trust, and they currently administer these trust funds for the represented police officers in the Portland Police Association, as well as the Portland Police Commanding Officers Association. So this is an existing relationship that, an arrangement that will be, is being transferred over to these officers in their non-represented positions.
Mayor, I moved a substitute.
For a second. Further discussion on motion to adopt a substitute, so let's take a roll call on that.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye. And anyone want to speak on this item? If not, then we'll take a roll call on the substitute as an emergency ordinance.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye. Mark, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item 382.
384?
No, 382, first.
Did we pull 384?
We did, we did, but we did both of them.
Sorry, 382. Authorize a contract with Pierce Manufacturing Inc. to provide up to nine triple-combination pumpers for a not-to-exceed amount of $5 million.
Yeah, I think I pulled this just because it, even though it maybe doesn't technically require that we have it on the regular calendar, I just thought it was a significant enough purchase that I wanted to make sure we noted it, it's coming through, and Commissioner Saltzman, anything that you wanted to add about it? But it's a, it's a big deal, we're keeping our equipment up to date.
Yeah, we're purchasing new equipment pursuant to the expressed desire of voters when they supported the general obligation bond, which I believe was 2010. So this is purchasing new firefighting, or fire apparatus, consistent with that bond measure.
Are we still maintaining our, our practice of occasionally making used equipment available to one of our sister cities when we cycle older vehicles out of the fleet?
Yes, in fact, I think just last year, we donated a vehicle to Guadalajara, another one, which we've, we've done, and it's great.
One of the great traditions is when the bomberos come up here and accept it, and then they actually drive it on I-5, which is amazing.
Ultimate road trip. Okay, any other questions about this item? Anyone want to speak to it? Then it, motion to adopt the report, please.
So move.
For a second.
Further discussion, roll call.
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz, a remarkably rapid purchase, considering you passed the ordinance to authorizing the purchase on March 18th. Aye.
Hales?
Aye. Okay, item 384.
Extend real property lease for Portland Children's Levy staff offices in the Spalding Building, 319 Southwest Washington Street.
Commissioner Fish, did you have a question about this item?
Yes, Mayor, so.
I could make some opening remarks. Yeah, please, go ahead.
Since I pulled it, if I could just explain why I pulled it, Mayor, and we can figure out the procedure. It is not my practice to pull things from the agenda, the consent agenda generally, and certainly on a second reading, that is procedurally irregular. I had a couple of questions about this that only came to my attention this morning. My preference is to set this over a week unless there's a reason it has to be voted on today, to get answers to my questions from facilities, and then come back and vote on it. That would be my preference. I don't control that. Otherwise, I have some questions which I could raise in a hearing, but I actually think it's more respectful to the sponsor to do that during the interim.
Commissioner Saltzman, your thoughts?
Well, this pertains to the lease for the Portland Children's Levy and the registered historic building, the Spalding Building. This is, we've been there for over 10 years. No issues have ever been raised before, so I regard this as, we have no other place to go, we've just, we need this lease. We have been working fully with OMF on its efforts to consolidate offices and relocate, and we all know that something's happening to the Portland Building, and it's going to be involving moving people out in the next few years as opposed to moving people in. But we have examined all those options in terms of relocating to the Portland Building, relocating to the 1900 Building, and this turns out to be where we are, where we've been for over 10 years, again, an historic building, which is consistent with our city policy, building policy, to support historic buildings. So we need this space, I think everybody knows the commercial vacancy rate in Portland is at a record low, we have no other place to go. And I think if you read all the supporting documents that have been filed with this, it documents everything I've just said, it's all, it's all here. So I would urge us to move ahead with this lease.
So Mayor, I don't, I don't have a substantive objection to the terms that have been negotiated. I have some questions about the duration of the lease, how this fits within the policy we've been grappling with as a council about using city-owned space first, and also the labor conditions of the building. My preference is to address those with the one we've set over, and normally, that would be a professional courtesy, but it's up to the council about whether this is set over for a week.
Are you willing to do that, Commissioner Saltzman? Is that something you'd entertain?
I want to make sure that's not going to interfere with the terms of the lease.
The lease term expires on May 31st in the ordinance.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I'm willing to set it over a week.
Okay, and that's what we'll do, we'll set that over for one week and make sure that those questions get answered.
Mayor, if the questions are answered, I'd be happy to sponsor an emergency clause if that becomes a question.
Okay, great, that might be helpful. All right, I believe we are done with this morning's agenda, right? Did I miss anything? If not, then we recess till 2:00 PM, thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
All right.